I think we'll just go ahead and jump out there. I'd like to bring the meeting on order, please. We can start by opening for public comment. If you have a comment you'd like to make, raise your hand. I'll recognize you. Come to the podium, face the board, and speak your piece. You have three minutes. Dave, Mr. Cedarholm.
Good evening. Dave Cedarholm, 81 Fox Garrison Road. I first want to thank the board and any members of the Advisory Budget Committee are here tonight for their hard work in pulling the budget together. And good luck moving forward with refining the budget. I also wanted to acknowledge that today is World Toilet Day, an issue that is near and dear to my heart.
How did you find that out?
Well, in the circles that I travel in, it's a big deal. And to acknowledge that more than 39% of the world's population, over two and a half billion people, do not have access to basic sanitation like a toilet. But that's really not why I came here to comment today. As you folks move forward with the budget, I wanted to encourage you to try to maintain something close to level spending compared to previous years. When I was on the board, I finished my term three years ago, we had done a pretty good job of that. And I know it's very tempting to just kind of move forward with the flow, but we are still in tough times, particularly with the real estate market. And the higher we see our tax rate climb, the more maintains Lee squarely at the top of the list for the highest tax rate in the county and one of the highest tax rates in our region. So please encourage fiscal restraint as you finalize the budget. As you know, I'm on the planning board and we just, I know Bob Smith just recently brought the CIP to you folks. And I want to commend the CIP committee. They did a great job keeping the increase in the CIP to 2%. However, I think as we all know, there's a bit of an elephant in the room with regard to the CIP. That CIP that the planning board approved did not contain probably what is the greatest capital improvement project that this town has ever seen, and that is the combination of a new library and a new town hall. So as you move forward in approving the budget and refining that CIP, I encourage you to actually insert those dollars that represent future capital improvements like the town center project that's going forward this year. We have, I think everybody's probably received their tax bills, we are well over $30 per thousand. And I expect we'll probably stay well above $30 per thousand in the years to come. So let's try to keep it as close to that as possible. So best of luck to you all. I will try to drop in occasionally and support you further as you refine the budget. So thanks a lot for all your hard work and Happy Toilet Day. World Toilet Day.
Happy World Toilet Day to you. That's the first time I've ever said that.
Hopefully it's not for that.
Anybody else for public comment? Okay, Larry Kenburke is not going to be here tonight, so we'll move on to Steve Pollitt and Randy Stevens. Is Randy here? Yes, he is. There he is. You're behind the podium. Pollitt to the cemetery burials, please join us.
I need a room up here.
Hopefully, hopefully we can reach agreement on this and make it a dead issue.
He's been waiting on that for some time.
All right, so when I got hired, I got hired under the impression I had nothing to do with cemeteries except mow them, maintain them. So I'm going to say that now. We'll see what happens. The excavator that we had access to, that we were using to bury people, we no longer have access to for $100, which was a discount because a lot of places that are grave diggers are charging $700, $800 to dig and bury a body. I don't have that kind of money in my budget to do any of that stuff. So what Randy and I talked about was let the funeral homes contract that out and have them deal with the burials of a full body. Cremations are different because you can have your loved one and earn on your table for three years and then decide you want to bury him. So why make him go? Find a funeral home to do all that when the sextant or the cemetery trustees can go out and dig the hole and bury and lay out for the cremation. With the full body burial, the sextant or the cemetery trustees would do all the layout and work with funeral home hires to dig and bury the body, and it would take the town completely out of it altogether.
Can I interrupt just for a minute? Because one of the problems I have personally is just understanding the process. The family, okay? They lose a loved one. Under your scenario, they call a funeral home?
Yeah, because they have to call a funeral...
That's the first thing they do, they call a funeral home. They have not necessarily purchased a plot yet or anything. They call the funeral home and then the funeral home in turn calls. They want to be buried in, do they call the cemetery trustees?
Right now, they call the chairman of the cemetery trustees.
Okay, so assuming they hire a sextant...
I usually get a call in turn.
Okay. Assuming they hire a sextant, which is...
Yeah, we're assuming they hire a...
Your scenario, the sextant would work for the cemetery trustees?
Excuse me?
The sextant would work for the cemetery trustees?
That's how, I guess it works, yeah. It would, that's how it would work unless there was a change in the... I don't want to be in charge of it all duly with the cemetery trustees. In the scenario that we have now, cemetery trustees, that's how it works.
So the only thing that... The only thing that the town of Lee sees is selling the piece of land.
Well, it's the right to be buried.
The right to be buried, right? And there's, and we sign these documents for people to be buried at that spot.
Correct. And all of those documents are executed by the cemetery trustees.
In some towns, a lot of smaller towns are going to this because they don't have it, because the rates are going up so much, they don't have a dedicated crew to do it. So like I said, a lot of the small towns are doing it and they just let the funeral home take care of it. A lot of the towns do a small fee that probably the funeral home pays to lay out the lot, make sure it's done right and do the paperwork.
So the funeral home would call the cemetery trustees for the plot, but then they would arrange for the person, whoever he is with a tobacco or whatever, to do the whole...
The funeral home would do that, yes.
Funeral home would do that.
There's a couple diggers out there that do it and they just, the funeral home pays that directly, much like it was before I was full time. I mean, not before I was full time, that's what happened. Funeral home just had a set fee, they paid you that. I can barely remember, a long time ago, when I was prior to 85, so you left the town, really, all the town part of it was just the filing and the paperwork.
So we, you, would do the maintenance, meaning the mowing and the trimming of the 17 so cemeteries that we're talking about, right?
Yeah, the only thing we're talking about is taking burials out of the equation.
Okay. Okay, I'm just trying to understand the process.
Cremation's a little bit harder because a lot of times they don't go, at the full burial, you've got to go through a funeral home. So it's not a big deal for the funeral home to arrange for the burial at the cemetery. Cremation's a little different. I was going to look it up, I forgot. I'd say at least between 30 and 40% of them are, the family does the arrangements, they bypass the funeral home, they go to the Cremation Society or something. Or as Steve says, they have them sit around for a while, keep them home, but that's a little different story because it would be a little bit difficult for them to go back to the funeral home and to be, you know, it's just awkward. It would be tough for the family to do that, to go back to the funeral, which they tried to avoid to start with. So cremations aren't, you know, they're not talking anywhere near as much money, but in any event, the rates need to be raised. I mean, if the town's going to be involved, the rates got, if the town's not going to be involved, I mean, it doesn't matter.
Refresh my memory, there's a charge now of $400 that we collect right now?
Right.
What does that go for?
$100 for tobacco. And really, all the tobacco does is he just digs down the middle of the hole, loads it in the truck, the excess, and puts some of it, usually the slum and everything, put it on plywood. The highway crew typically puts down the plywood, marks it out, puts down the plywood, takes the sawed off, cuts the sawed, takes the sawed off, gets some of the little milk, and then tobacco just digs down the middle because it's so rocky up there. If you try to dig along the edge, you're going to have a little six feet wide to three and a half feet wide. Then, you know, it's all handwork, shaving the sides off, digging the corners out, leveling the bottom out. So tobacco's really just taking the big stuff out. Now, there is a guy that will do it for, I asked him, but you know, one of the grave diggers that does a contract, and he said he would come in and do, dig the hole for $350. I assume he probably has his own dump truck, dump it in and set the plywood and whatever.
That's the one that would not come back and fill it in, though, right?
Right. So if the rate is $400, you pay him $350, still got to fill it yourself, and we can dig it up to good.
Well, it gets back to who would fill it in.
What's that?
It gets back to who would fill it in.
Right.
He's not doing that part.
Right. So it all boils down to, as long as the funeral homes are, you know, it just saves a lot of complication.
You say he thinks it out. He digs it out and he also trims the sides and all, he just digs it out?
He digs it out.
Who does the sides and all?
Highway department.
The highway department is still going to do the sides?
Oh, not if, not if you have this guy for $350. He'll do all the...
He does it all?
He will do it all.
Okay.
But he won't fill it in?
But somebody would have to fill it in. Or you will come back and fill it in, but it's $700, $650, $700 a weekday, it'll be more on the weekends.
So my feeling on this is go with Steve's proposal, let the funeral policy handle it, and then I guess the cremation one will stick with, as Randy suggested, stay here in the town.
Has anybody talked to the trustees about it?
We tried. I mean, we tried to set up a meeting.
We tried to set up a meeting. And I sent them emails, they got a copy of Randy's summary, and said we were going to be talking about it tonight, so...
That was our goal, to speak and I'd meet with them.
I'd never met him, so I kind of figured if I was working for him and mowing the cemeteries, he'd want to meet me, but obviously not, so...
Maybe they know something we don't.
Probably. I think so.
In my mind, we ought to draw it up as a procedure and get them to sign off on it. Everybody signs off on it, and that's the way we do it.
Can I ask Mr. Stevens a question? Are you now the official sextant or are you still?
No, I will not be until this all gets straightened out.
Oh, okay, all right. So after it gets straightened out?
And I won't be a sextant, but I will be, if they want me to be a custodian, I'll consider that...
What's the difference?
The statute says it's either a custodian or a sextant.
Oh, so it's the same job, but different name?
Right.
Okay, I see.
Actually, I love the cemetery superintendent, it's a pretty good title.
So in answer to your, Karen, you were saying, you know, get a procedure down. I think the procedure's pretty straightforward.
It is.
Yeah, just...
It just takes, you know, five or six bullets, and then we get them to agree, we agree, and...
I don't see where the negotiation is required.
I mean, my concern would just be we would not capture their attention and then we'd still be where we are now.
That's why...
The last I knew, the conversation seemed to be, the selectmen said, "Okay, we're going to work with our highway department and figure out what we're going to do." And the cemetery trustees, that evening anyway, seemed to be, "Okay, go ahead and do that." So...
Yeah, I would want something in writing that we both acknowledge that's how it's going to work. One, it gives the people who are actually doing the thing some guidelines about what they're supposed to do and what they're not supposed to do. And I think it clarifies the situation between the two groups because they're autonomous, but if we have some kind of procedure and they sign off on it, I think that's the way to proceed. Plus then the supervisor of the cemeteries or the custodian will know what the rules are so we can follow them.
So I just want to get the, I don't mind the procedural thing. I just wonder if we're moving in this direction of the funeral policy while they're digging and we don't see any money transferred, they just kind of do it all, and the custodian is the one that works, get the layout right and properly and so forth. I don't mind the procedural thing. I think we should move forward on this.
But we're still involved with the plots. If somebody, in terms of your example, doesn't own the plot, we still are involved with that, but that's...
Yeah, I understand that issue, yeah.
You still may want to consider just, you know, some kind of a fee, a fee for a layout and finally, I don't know how else to get paid for it. Unless, unless the town's just going to look at it.
No, I understand what you're saying, Karen. I mean, it's just a matter, it still has to be drawn up and say, "This is it," as opposed to, "Take a look at this and..."
Yes, exactly. This is the procedure.
That's fine.
But I just want to put it forward that, you know, we're in agreement with the highway supervisor, we're going to move in this direction.
And then the other thing that they talked about was the file cabinet and all the record stuff. If Randy does it, the stuff's already on the highway department computer and already in there, and he knows where everything is, so you might as well just leave everything right where it is, and he can just go into the highway department building and do what he needs to do. That way you don't have to worry about that aspect of it.
What would the future custodian suggest in terms of a fee for the town services for doing...
I don't want to have those $50. I don't really have to check around, but I don't know if it has to be that much, but at least I would be 25. Because you've got to go up there, you know, kind of on the hand and lay it out. You've got to do quite a bit of paperwork to enter it in the computer and get it to the town hall and enter it in, you know, like I say, it was a couple, we entered into a kind of a plot plan on the computer and then a list, so it takes a little time.
So should just ask the town administrator to work with the highway supervisor and the future custodian?
Potential.
Potential.
So how are, how are we doing cremations?
I don't know. I mean, it sounds like the towns where I know them, but who does it? Whether the custodian does it or the highway department does it, it hasn't been determined. And maybe it depends who they get for custodian, custodian may not want to do it, so. By me, I have no problem with it.
It's hand digging a hole, so it's an hour, hour and a half to dig the hole. It's not like it's that big a deal.
And we have a fee for that already, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know what that is, so...
It's $100 unless it's after 3 o'clock, it's on a weekday, and then it's $125.
I think it's $150 on a cremation load.
Yes.
So maybe the three of you can work that out?
Yep.
With the idea that when it's all signed off on all of us, that the trustees of the cemeteries sign off on it as well at a duly noticed meeting? You don't have to put that in the minutes.
I think Steve did, he told me if I'm wrong, he did say that if I was a potential custodian and I wasn't available, or given weekend, one of the highway people could do it.
But that's why the $150 should probably get raised because they're going to end up going and they have to go dig it, sit there and wait for it to be done, and then fill it back in. And then that's, overtime, that's going to be coming out of my budget that they're going to have to... But that leads us to another conversation that we can have a different day.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we'll proceed.
I'm still up.
You're still up?
Oh, okay. All right, so my plan for the swap shop is this. The fence, if you're driving out and the swap shop's on your left, there's a fence on your right. If you fill in up to the fence, you can park 12 cars and they're on a 45-degree angle winding down the fence. That's the best option that I can come up with. And then you're, you're not at 90, you're not backing out into people because they wanted to put jersey barriers off the corner of the building straight down, and all they could picture is someone backing out and going right into the building with people coming out. This way you have the best sight distance because you can see up and over the hill. I proposed putting a crosswalk on top of a speed table right there, you know, they have the makeshift speed bumps. If you pave in a speed table and put a crosswalk on the top of it, they have to slow down if people use a crosswalk, they have to slow down, and then you put a yield to pedestrians sign up. And then you put, where it says, "No parking on the swap shop now," put up a handicap placard.
And Steve, you already have the material for the fill?
I have the material for the fill, but not for the top dressing. I have all the tailings from the sand that they've been screening for the past few years that's got anywhere from, you know, three to four inch all the way down to two inch rock with some mixed in dirt, so it's good base to fill in. The other thing we could do to make it look better, if that's the way we're going to go, is buy some of the concrete barriers and line them along the back and move the fence back five feet. If you move the fence back five feet, you're not cutting down any trees, you're not encroaching on any of the walking things, you're just giving yourself that little bit of extra room. And the fence needs to get, the fence is all destroyed anyway from snow removal, I guess, so it needs to get replaced anyway. That's the best option that I can come up with, and it gives you the most space for the most vehicles you could park.
Steve, you had, I think Toby had mentioned there was an issue with water. Is this going to help remove some of the standing water during rainstorms and stuff?
It's on the complete opposite side where his water issue is.
Okay.
Unless you go in there and grate it all out and hog all the dirt out and then spend a lot of money with pavement in there, you're not going to get rid of the water problem unless we stock cars for parking, because that's the issue. We could fill it in with dirt, but in two weeks, three weeks, with cars pulling in and out all the time, there's going to be another hole there, and there is going to be more water.
Is it a building issue?
With respect to the possibility of moving the fence in toward the forested area, we may have a problem with encroachment on the conservation easement that's held by the Society for the Protection of New Hampshire Forests. So I would need to read that language carefully and confer with Steve and see if that, actually, I'd have to confer with the Forest Society as well, see if that would be viable. Because right now the fence goes on like a half moon shape, and all I was talking about was just cutting the half moon shape in a straight line.
So there may be no problem?
No, but so there'd be no trees cut down or anything, I just, that's the best issue I got. And then we could, you could even do it where you don't move the fence, you put it inside those pieces of concrete. So you put the jersey, the concrete right along the existing fence line and then put the fence on top of the concrete.
Well, Bill, would you check with the appropriate people and see that gives us some flexibility as to what we do?
I would do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's a, it's a good design. I understand you're driving out, so you just park at an angle. When you back out, it's easy to see you're not at 90 degrees, so I think the design looks good. We just got to check in this fence line issue.
Anything from the police chief in terms of this?
Well, Steve and I met out there. I think that's the best possible outcome. You still have the issue of people crossing the street, not much you can do without. The only other concern, and I talked to Steve about it, is people launching off, they get in their car, they put it in drive instead of reverse, or they pull in and hit the gas and launching off. So maybe something like Randy put down a little river park, you know, the old telephone poles with just a six by six on it or something, just to give it a little bit to keep them from going out, that's possible. But that's one of the, but the main concern I have is you're going to be elevated a little bit.
You can buy those curb stops, too.
Yeah, that's the other thing, you talk about the curb, the concrete curb stops. Something that'll remind me, I won't go any further. But other than that, it gives a lot of room for parking and we've got the proper signage and the crosswalk there, it can be okay.
Sounds good.
I think that's our plan. Maybe we should move forward with it.
How much of it can you do before the blizzard gets you?
Tomorrow? I was going to start it, but then obviously mother nature had different plans, so I'll do what I can.
I understand.
I understand, too.
As we get, as we get time, we'll go over and plug away at it, so just hope it doesn't snow every day the dump's not open.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Scott Nemeth, Fire Chief. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Randy? Mr. Stevens, don't be leaving now.
Don't leave.
Don't be leaving now.
Come back, Randy.
Come back!
Randy, we need to talk.
I'm here with my Heritage Commission hat on today. We all know that Randy has done so much, and every time you turn around, you find something else that Randy has done. You look at the pictures, you look at all these things that have been Randy. Well, as you know, the Heritage Commission has put up banners. We started in the 250th, and I say, "The Heritage Commission put them up." No, Randy put them up. So we have a special one that was put up for Randy, who was in town, and we'd like Randy to have it as part of the memory of putting up banners and working for the town and how you're appreciated, Randy.
Thank you very much.
I don't know whether it's going to fit over your bed, but... It's got a few extra names on it.
Yeah. Good memories.
Yes.
It could be a table runner.
There you go. A shade.
A shade?
I think you should put it above his bed so he can just lay in there and look at it.
There you go. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Randy.
Now Scott Nemeth, Fire Chief.
He got the pictures.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Good evening.
You're welcome.
I'm here tonight to ask the board to accept a grant from the 2019 Volunteer Fire Systems Fund. I put in for this so that the fire department could purchase Wildland Fire here. As you guys know, our structural equipment only lasts for 10 years, forestry equipment's a say... As you guys know, our structural equipment only lasts for ten years and forestry equipment's insane. It's kind of been put on the backboard over the last couple of years to bring up all of our structural gear. This grant is good for up to $2,000 and it's a fifty-fifty match. So to outfit all of the members on the department with a new helmet, with a Nomex shirt and pants, it would be approximately $4,923.25. The funds would put towards, that would be $2,000, so we'd have to come up with $2,923.25 which we have in our budget and our protective gear, so.
Good. Love grant money.
You do have a motion?
Yeah, I have one, Governor. So I moved to accept a grant in the amount of $2,000 from the 2019 Volunteer Fire Assistance Fund, grant program for forest fire personnel protective equipment as presented by the fire chief. Can I get a second, Senator, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for that.
I appreciate all your efforts.
And now, selectmen, Scott Busby to talk about historical markers.
The Heritage Commission has been working with a designer to create historical markers because the town hall, the tool shed with the tramp room and the Oldie Historical Society have been placed on the Register of Historical Places in the state of New Hampshire. So we thought it would be nice if we had some signage to put on those particular buildings. So I'm here tonight with a real one, so you can take a look at it, but we have one made up so that it had the name of the particular structure as well as the date that it was created. So I'm asking permission from the board to be able to put these up on the three buildings, so.
Take a look at it.
And that's the weatherproof material or does it have to go in something else?
Nope, it is designed to be outside. It's called, it's called Die Bond.
Die Bond?
Two pieces of aluminum sandwiched between some weather resistant material. It's been around for a while. There's a couple of different things to do and the company's recommending this for outside. In terms of placing it on the structure, they recommend putting four holes in each of the corners and attaching it to the building that way. Well, the new building would not be on the state register of historical places. Maybe fifty years from now, maybe, but not now, so.
This selectman thinks it's a wonderful idea and thank you for thinking of it. Do you have a spot that you think it would, on each building?
No, that can, someplace where it's visible.
Yep.
I'm not sure exactly where, maybe in terms of the tool shed, maybe on the front or the side as people go by. In terms of the Historical Society problem in the front, by the door or something like that. In terms of town hall, maybe someplace where other people come in, I don't know. That's up to work out. If you have any suggestions.
Well, since we're talking about markers, though, at one time we talked about markers for the barns.
Yeah, that's, I haven't heard back, but I've been, we've been focusing on this. But yes, that's still something we wanna do. The other part of this, there are eight, I always get this wrong, eight or nine properties that are on the state register. And what the historical, excuse me, Heritage Commission would like to do is to offer this design to those particular homeowners and see if they're interested. And the Heritage Commission would pay for those particular signs to be placed up there, but we'd need their permission. Some people might be interested, some people might not, so. But we thought it would be a nice thing so that people know, you know, how old some of our structures are.
Absolutely.
More information about it, so. But yeah, we're still doing the barn thing, but we haven't got back to it.
Okay. I'm sure, are there all in favor?
Absolutely. Thank you.
So, can I have, oh, I moved to allow the Heritage Commission to place historical marker signs on the town hall, the tool shed with the tramp room and the Oldie Historical Society building.
Second.
No discussion.
I have no discussion. Oh, those in favor?
Aye. Move here. Nice design.
Yeah, it is. Very good. It does look good. Julie Glover.
So with the re, do you, oh, you want it back?
He wants it back.
So with the recent election, we received, I don't know whether I wanna call them complaints, but certainly some suggestions that we might wanna consider having voting at the Massey School again, 'cause I think it was a number of years ago. The selectmen are responsible for providing a suitable site in which to hold elections, so that is why I'm bringing this to the select board's attention. And nobody wanted to think about this, entertain it, have me find out from the school whether that would be possible. I think that the Oyster Room at Carper School District closes that day because they used the high school for voting in Durham, so I don't think it would be a problem in that regard. So just throwing it out there, see whether the selectmen have any interest in even pursuing having it in a different location or whether you wanna keep having it in this building.
Well, first of all, I think we should explore it anyways, that's number one. Number two, it was very crowded, of course, that midterm election was a real kicker anyways, but there was a lot of people and it was quite dense. I felt for the people that were registering.
The lines were very long.
Yeah, for people registering to vote, it was, there just wasn't enough chairs. Standing deep and finally you went out the hallway, people, the people working, the volunteers did a great job keeping everybody in line, but then we had people crisscrossing 'cause they're trying to get the flow right, so I think it's something we should investigate.
Yeah, I think it's not just, it's not just the size of the room, though. We were, to a certain extent, a little bit understaffed. And also, I think the next time, there's no way we anticipated that many people that wanted to register to vote prior to voting on the same day. And that's really what, we had slowed things down a lot, so. Yeah, it needs to be, certainly needs to be looked at to see what improvements can be made. You have some comment, Mr. Busby?
I'm just glad that we're in Durham, 'cause they signed up 3,000 people that day, so.
Three or four hundred?
So that's like order of magnitude, 3,000 signups, yes.
Wow.
They were.
Yeah, they were, they were very busy. I don't mind, I don't mind checking it out. It would be nice to see if we can get the school for free.
Yeah, would be nice.
Would be nice.
Oh, we did a, I did a tour of the new additions and stuff. It's pretty good. They're gonna have, what is it, that super?
Super Fifth.
That open house. So it looks pretty good. I would think I would get more for a half a million dollars for the upfront, but I guess not, so. But the rooms look very nice. They should be done by then. Oh, no, no, I meant the, the front parts.
The front part?
Yeah, the front part.
Okay, so we can explore it.
There's a school board meeting that we were invited to, the governor is supposed to be attending, they're gonna be dedicating the new parts.
No, what is that? What time?
I think it's the fifth.
Isn't that?
That's that thing that came across.
That's our volunteer dinner.
Hold on.
Right.
Yeah, it is the volunteer dinner. Scott Nemet.
I would just like to say that if it is being held here again, and I know this one was in November and the times changed and stuff, but if we can rent light towers or something, because we had multiple calls that night, later in the night, with everybody walking across the parking lot, it was extremely hard to see. I had a couple of my people reach out to me and just say that they were very concerned with responding to calls just because there were so many people. In the morning when I came in, I was shocked, just like everybody else. They had cars on both sides of George Bennett Road, up to Side Street. We try and give this whole side of the building to everybody for parking, so we just block it off in that back corner so we can have that back, so. I think when it all happened, we fit enough people and it worked and it flowed, but lately, I remember the presidential election, they were having people walk into our side of the building and then they were using the EOC room to register everybody. And I had people coming in my office constantly asking me where to register. And we're trying to get stuff done as well, and I know Tommy feels that sometimes too, it's just the amount of people in this building. But my biggest concern was the lighting around here, it's just awful for that. And for one night, if we can rent some light towers or something to help that, that was my biggest concern with it.
I also spoke to Tom Insur about the lights out here because when people were going out, especially after dark, there's a light above, a little one above the door as you go out, but there was nothing along the sidewalks.
It's dark.
We have the same issue with the corner out there.
Yeah, I'm having the LED vendor look into putting additional lighting on the building. It's not that there, it's not that there are lights that are not working, there are not enough lights on the building.
Sounds like a plan.
So we'll get into that. Okay. So the purchase of the property from the Street Church, this is the most recent answer that I got from the church's attorney in terms of are we all set for a closing for December fourteenth, which was the tentative date that I had been given. Her answer is that she is waiting for a definitive answer from the New Hampshire Conference of UCC Churches to confirm that it will sign the release of the right of reverter at its executive committee meeting next week, or whether it will have to circulate a ballot to know what the timing on that will be. Now, that's the first I've heard that it, that it may not be just the executive committee. All along, I thought what we were being told was that the executive committee just had to sign off on the right of reverter. So that apparently is now what we're looking for and I, I believe that that is gonna happen or at least knowing better whether it can be the executive committee sometime after Thanksgiving. So I guess that December fourteenth day is now more tentative than I had thought it was gonna be. But they're not waiting for anything from us, we're just waiting for.
The church. And it got signed off from the mortgagee, the owner?
Yeah, yeah, that's all set. We've received an inquiry from someone, actually inquiring for their parent who has a disability and is wondering whether the town issues hardship abatements. Hardship abatements are allowed under the statute, and although it's that language that the selectmen have the authority to do that, as justice may, whatever the word, not desire, but, but as you could see in the agenda packet, you know, other towns that do it have an application in place, a policy in place, because I think that the last thing that you would want is to do it on any kind of haphazard basis.
It's a very in-depth procedure they have.
I mean, I, and I understand why, it's kind of a big deal if you're gonna be forgiving someone from paying any portion of their taxes or even if it's just any interest or penalties that might have accrued. So if the board is interested, I will take the examples and try to draft something up, hopefully for the next meeting.
How is this different than the state program that gives people, is a hardship thing for the state?
There is, and if you looked at what some of the other towns do, they require someone to explore and exhaust all other possible avenues of relief before they come to the town. So incorporate that kind of language into any policy or procedure that we might adopt. I don't, maybe it's possible that even if they qualify for that, they still can't pay their taxes. But again, this is, this would be, I think, for a disability, someone with a disability.
But didn't I read on one of the sheets of paper also they apply that, for instance, they lost their home in a fire?
Well, that's a different statute. That, that's a different set of laws.
Okay.
'Cause I think we did that.
Do we have one that applies to them?
We've done that.
We've done that before, yeah.
Okay, but we've just done that before. There's no, there's no, like, this one has like four or five pages of information you have to fill out relative to financial situations and so on.
Right, but the one about a fire is a very different specific statute and it's pretty easy to tell if someone's house has burned down. In other words, it's not, well, are you really disabled, are you, you know, under what definition and what level of financial need are we gonna establish, so.
Okay.
That, that's a different set of laws.
I think we should move forward, kind of, as Tom Insur look into it. Hopefully, government will be more concise on that, of course, who's looking at it. As you said, I don't wanna start a roll on this, obviously, it'd be very specific.
Right.
If this arises, we'll be able to deal with it.
Even though I don't think either one of these, I think there was another one where I saw where they have their welfare officer do the analysis because they're used to doing a very similar intake, so that's probably how I would draft ours.
Yes.
Okay.
Great suggestion.
Okay. And then, we did talk about dates for meetings with the TCVC to hear a presentation, I think, for the select board from the architect, and December tenth was a date that had been floated out, but we never completed the discussion with the select board to see whether that was a date that would work. It's a non-meeting Monday.
A non-meeting Monday.
A non-meeting Monday.
A non-meeting Monday.
I think that sounds like a good non-meeting. We're gonna meet on a non-meeting.
But then it won't be a non-meeting.
Then we'll have a meeting.
The other thing in terms of, that was the date that they gave us in terms of getting, 'cause they'll have about ninety-five percent of the stuff done. We talked about having a non-meeting presentation, so we can just deal with that particular. 'Cause they're gonna just go through a PowerPoint presentation that's probably the template for the public meetings that we're gonna do the presentation, so it'd be nice to run through it with you gentlemen, get your opinions and thoughts, because this is what we're gonna be presenting. If you're not comfortable with it, then we shouldn't be presenting it to the public, so.
I agree.
It was the tenth, so.
I think tenth's a good idea.
Six thirty?
December tenth? Denise will call me.
That's why I'm gonna reach.
It works, it works.
Okay. Um, that's everything I have.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
You're good? Okay. Motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, as you seen it.
Can I ask, is there something, because if we wanna talk about something, we usually pull it out.
Yes.
Can we ask Mr. Hum if he wants to say a few words or?
About his?
No, not really?
Don't have any need.
Okay.
Have two highly qualified applicants.
Okay.
Yeah, I read their, their buyer, oops, they are, they are qualified.
You're back.
Sorry, I just wanna, he came a lot of ways though.
It's fine, it's fine.
Sorry.
Okay. Consent agendas?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We're killers.
Okay. Oh, my goodness.
He doesn't want to sign to it.
Are we, are we paying the county via ACH or we run a check again?
No, we always drive the check over.
Do you need a check runner person again?
Sure, I think it's due by December seventeenth.
Yeah. Can we have a please?
Absolutely, yeah, just give me a call.
Here we go.
Well, Mr. Brown is signing his life away. The tree lighting is on the first, can we have, they've already talked to you or not?
They have not, but.
Could I talk to you and say, could we have somebody out there to help?
What time are you looking at?
The tree lighting is at four and the conscience at four-thirty, so I'd say like three forty-five to like four fifteen maybe.
Take care of it.
Just somebody out there with the lights to make them slow down going around that corner.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll two out there.
And for the people that are appointed tonight, you just need to go to the town clerk's office and get sworn in. So, that's the second part of the process. So.
Anytime?
Uh, what, next time she's open?
Next time she's open.
When? Monday, Wednesday? Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Yeah.
Not this Friday? Not this Friday. Tomorrow, though? No, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
What's today? Monday, Monday.
Oh, my gosh, you sure you're ready?
It's World Toilet Day.
It's World Toilet Day.
Just to confirm, it's on Saturday.
Yes, it's Saturday first. Yeah, it's usually on Sunday, I don't know, but.
Yeah.
It's the first. How's your husband?
Not great. Thanks for asking.
Randy doesn't look too happy to get his banner.
Huh?
Probably something else I have to deal with probably. What am I gonna do with it?
I, I think he gets, he feels, uh, anxious or awkward in those positions, at least, being acknowledged.
Yes, probably right.
Yeah, I don't know what Michelle's gonna think about having that above her bed.
I'm not gonna let it go, I'm gonna call him tomorrow and ask him to come over and help him.
Well, of course, that's gonna kind of literate the mirror, he already has that.
Oh, brother.
Just think of the years from now, when people are trolling YouTube, and they're looking at this meeting, they're thinking, geez, that's what those people are talking about.
Chairman, the board makes this lame joke about the dead.
Yeah.
Supposed to finish him up with a.
Room shot? Yes.
Thought it was pretty good, I had to. It's a problem that fits. Another sense of humor.
Is the board prepared to sign the minutes from the November fifteenth?
Yes.
The November fifth meeting minutes?
November fifth meeting minutes? What was special about those?
You didn't get them until today.
Oh.
Yeah, they, they.
I didn't see them, why?
Yeah.
I haven't read them.
They were sitting on my computer. They fell off my computer.
They fell off your computer? Likely, excuse me. All right, sign it.
So, uh. You signed it in the wrong place?
Yeah, so, I figure the chairman signs it, I gotta sign it in the wrong place, too.
Oh, leave.
You think this is it?
That's it?
Okay, if I sound a motion to enter in a non-public session per RSA ninety-one hyphen A colon three two A and E, we'll call both. Selectman Bugby? Oh, yeah, I get a second.
Second.
Selectman Bugby?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Selectman McCord?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Motion, Carrie.
Carrie, read it. Carrie's Carrie.
Did you put on the non-public, the consent?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Didn't read this in there? I can read this in there.
Sorry?
Didn't read this in there?
You wanna go in there? I moved to enter in the public session.
We already did that.
Already did that.
What, what?
We completed that.
Did we do it in there?
Yeah, we're not, so we're not doing it.
We said we had to come out here to do it. All right.
Are you seeing any of them?
No.
No.
I make a motion that, oh, are you on, are you on miscellaneous, Mr. Brown?
Sorry?
Are you on miscellaneous?
Miscellaneous?
You want miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous, I'm in this business, yes.
Um, I move that Scott Bugby pick, the volunteer of the year, and work with the town secretary to get the appropriate acknowledgements produced.
I'll second it.
Was I supposed to, I did get a nomination.
Who'd you get?
I don't know, what's today, was I supposed to bring that in today? I completely forgot.
Yeah, because we're hoping to present it on the dinner.
Okay, um.
Who'd you get?
We're done.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Bugby, it's your responsibility.
I'll be prepared.
Okay, all right.
What just happened? You did, it's me, you know.
You can say whatever you want, I mean, we have to listen to you. You weren't recognized.
Scott is gonna work with you on the volunteer of the year.
To get, uh, to get the, uh.
Oh, okay.
Awards for the volunteer dinner recipients, uh.
And the board of selectmen has given this a perfectly pure authority to make that decision.
Oh, okay.
We see any issues?
The TCVC is, well, one member of the TCVC is meeting with the DOT engineer tomorrow morning at Karen Rossi's office to talk about access points to the Massey Road. The TCVC is meeting tomorrow afternoon at three o'clock to take that information and decide in terms of building layouts and things like that. Um, Valley Brettlinger is working on the library and the new town hall. They need to know where the buildings are gonna be located, so. But you go, should've got the update, so you can take a look at that. We also have an agenda for tomorrow, um, creating the two dates or finding the two dates for doing the public presentations, possibly later in December or in January. So, those are our tasks that we have at the moment. So, we will be meeting, um, on the tenth at six thirty. You guys to do the presentation. I think that's it. Anything else, John, that I missed? Different updates?
I think that's it. Um, I'm, I'm meeting with, uh, the fire chief tomorrow after the meeting with Karen Rossi and DOT, um, just for his initial input, um, on driveways, parking lots, uh, cisterns, location.
So.
I queried the town hall staff.
Oh, yeah.
About a separate entrance.
Yeah.
Town hall staff doesn't feel that it's necessary to have a separate entrance.
Okay.
But the town clerk, town collector wasn't in today.
Okay.
So.
Well, when she's in, oh, wait, she wasn't in today?
She was not in today.
Was it, she supposed to be open?
The, uh, Liz was there.
Oh, but, okay.
But I wasn't able to talk to women.
So, maybe, hopefully she's in Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Okay. And if the town secretary, or excuse me, the finance officer can let me know when the check needs to go, I can plan to do that.
From the planning board, it was canceled. Any more, uh, comments, discussion? Make a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Yeah, I was just saying that from the planning board point of view is that Bedrock Gardens asked for a continuance, so no decision is made as of yet.
My golly. How long was I gonna drag on?
It's been a while, but that's a lot of activity in that room.
The other thing, um, the spreadsheet that you sent out, said we need the evaluations.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know if you've gotten any feedback from them yet in terms of when that is?
I haven't gotten any feedback yet, but they all know.
What's the, well, I suppose the deadline is June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Well, it is, but, you know, we try to roll it into the budget, so.
Sometime.
I would say we'd wanna know before, well, you would wanna have your numbers probably by the first public budget hearing?
Which is January.
Third?
So, let us, evaluations to us by the fifth, which is our next meeting. And then we'll talk, right? Fifth or the third?
No, December third.
Third, excuse me, the third. And then we'll have, uh, a discussion in terms of raises and stuff on the seventeenth.
Yeah.
Does that sound?
It sounds good.
So, hopefully the department heads have done their part, so. But that's like two weeks, so, even if they haven't, they should, I don't think.
Well. Have you reminded them?
Mm-hmm.
Of you? Should be all right. Anybody else? Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.